Good evening and welcome to our town council meeting. It's a Tuesday, June 10th. And we are going to go ahead and get started just in a moment, but before we do, if you'd like to access the meeting online, making public comments and watching it on Zoom, just go to basalt.net, click on the agendas and minutes tab, and click on the June 10th, 2025 meeting packet, and you'll see instructions on there on how to access in Zoom if you're watching online. So with that, I will ask, call the meeting to order and ask Pam to please call the roll.
Happily. Thank you, sir. Let's begin with Rick Stevens, Hannah Berman, Angel DuPuyard, Ryan Slack, David Knight, Peter Schindler, Angela Anderson. The A-Team is present. Thank you, sir.
All right, great. Thank you for that. Next up, we have our consent agenda. It's item 2A, our minutes for May 27th, 2025. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved in a second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have item three, which is our call to the public. Just would ask that everybody limit their comments to three minutes, address your comments directly to me, and identify yourself by name and your address whenever you're making the comments. In the back of the room, there's also a sign-in sheet that you, if you'd please, assign your name there. And be courteous, civil, and constructive. It goes, kind of goes without saying. And then we'll make no decision nor take action based on those comments, except we might direct our interim town manager, which that's going to take me a while to get used to you sitting over there. So, anyway.
I could get a cardboard cutout.
I think he talks interim stuff. He should be over there.
I'll wheel you back and forth.
So if anybody would like to come up to the podium and make comments, floor's open.
Good afternoon. I'm Annalee Keen, and I'm here on behalf of the Aspens Hall. I'm heart, and we just wanted to come once again to thank for the donation and your continued support through this process for us. And we do have a couple of residents that would like to thank you as well. And is it a big tip for them if they can...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'll start the clock over and everything, so.
Buenas tardes. A cada uno tengan en esta tarde queremos dar gracias. Primariamente a Dios por tocar los corazones de cada uno de ustedes, por tomarnos en cuenta, por pensar en la situación que estamos pasando. Estamos muy agradecidos y queremos decirles que Dios lo bendiga por, porque están haciendo algo grande en nuestra familia, en nuestros hijos, en nuestros padres, en cada uno, en toda la comunidad. Les agradecemos verdaderamente y queremos de que... Somos una comunidad en la que queremos ser parte también para apoyar y ayudar a todo aquel que necesite. Y tenemos ejemplos que son ustedes, que nos están dando el ejemplo de que no nos dejan solos. No estamos solos y sabemos de que unidos podemos hacer la diferencia en este valle y en este país también. Y les damos gracias por todo lo que han hecho. Ah, perdón. Mi nombre es Ana Rivas.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Rivas. I just want to thank for the continued support that you have provided for us. You are an example in this town for us, and as leaders, we are grateful for all that you are doing for us and setting the example for the rest of the valley and being helpful to us and our cause. And we just want to say may God bless every single one of you and thank you for touching the bottom of your hearts to help us in this journey that we have.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es María Meraz y tengo 34 años viviendo aquí en el Valle. Mi familia, mis padres, mis hermanos, mis hijos y yo. Y me gustaría quedar aquí.
Good afternoon. My name is María Meraz. I've lived in the Mobile Home Park 34 years, in the Valley 34 years. My parents, my children, myself have been here.
Y gracias por apoyarnos y hacernos sentir que no estamos solas.
Thank you for your continued support and for making us feel that we're not alone.
Un placer. Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I think that might be it. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming and thank you all for your comments. Doug is going to speak to this a little bit. We had some discussions today. He'll give you more details what we are looking at, increasing what we are going to be able to do. But really, like we were saying last time, we want to do everything we possibly can, and we encourage every other organization, business, individuals, to do everything they possibly can. Like, this is, this is a huge priority for us, as I know it is for you all. So, thank you for coming out and speaking out and staying on this. Next up, we have mayor and council comments and reports. No, no, yeah, sorry.
Brooke, if I'm going to speak to... But she's going to be speaking on this.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's not, it's not time yet. Thank you for the cash. Okay, so next up, we have mayor and council reports and comments. Floor's open.
Just like to say to all the folks in the Aspen Basalt Park, thank you so much for being here today. It's really powerful to hear from you all, and you're a very important part of this community. And I know we all are on the same page when we agree you're an important part. You and your families and your children are an important part of this community. So gracias por estar aquí hoy. Sus historias son importantes y poderosas. Y su trabajo es un parte importante de nuestra economía. Sus familias son una parte importante de nuestras escuelas y la comunidad. Y como dijo Anna, no están solos. Nosotros también apoyaré por ustedes.
Any other comments for you all? We did have our retreat today. That was really good. Thank you again, Doug, Jenny, for putting that on. And thank you all for, it's been a long day, but I am really excited about, it's been the priorities we have, including affordable housing, which definitely was a big part of the discussion. So I will leave mayor and council comments at that and turn it over to Doug for the interim manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things I'd like to bring to the group. One is just a clarification as to what was published in the Basalt Board Bulletin this month referencing the Midvalley Trails Plan. And I think there was some, the way it was written, it was inferred, one could infer that it was a done deal, that the actual plan was approved vis-à-vis Raft, assuming some of the ownership of maintenance of the Crown Mountain space. So that is not, it is not a done deal. And that the council would be in the months ahead, if that is something that is of interest, will be formalizing, memorializing it into an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, that would specify who, what, when, where, why, and some of the details that were not present in the initial presentation. So I just want for the record, just state that that was not a done deal.
Thank you for, for that clarification.
And second item was, we were petitioned by Chris Mittera, Basalt Chamber of Commerce, to be supportive of a grant that they're applying for. There would be technical assistance on basically creating a blueprint for Basalt being a destination. I wasn't able to personally collaborate with my colleague, Michelle, verbally, but we did electronically speak about it, and she supports this. And I think that we would be supportive of this being something that the town would support, that they would apply for the grant, and that we would then also participate in the effort by, we would delegate, designate somebody on our team to participate in that as well. So, just looking for a nod, as Brian would say, you know, it's like whether or not we're proceeding with that support. And then last, is the letter that we would be issuing to Thistle Rock on this initiative for the mobile homes. Everybody left for the headline. But we did speak at the retreat today, and we are, town is going to be increasing its commitment from what was mentioned as $250,000 to $500,000. And we were also, we signed a grant with DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, to be the paymaster that would then employ West Mountain Regional Authority to actually garner all of these resources that are being contributed by various towns, municipalities. So I know that all of the, I don't, all of the various consortium of contributors are meeting this week, and then 13th is when that letter would be issued to Thistle, saying that we would be in support of the effort. So, that's the update there. And obviously, we're, speaking today, would be issuing that letter for your signature later this week.
Yep. So we're really excited about that, and excited to see the momentum continue.
Let me say, en español, nosotros comentar quinientos mil. So, doble.
Thank you for doing that. All right. Does she have anything? Did she have anything else, Doug, to do? All right. Well, next up, we have our presentations, and we just have one, I believe, no, two. The first one is item 6A, which is our 2024 year-end audit. And Doug and Paul.
Paul is participating via Zoom.
This monitor is off.
There he is.
These TVs are not on.
Oh.
If you want to start kind of the preamble.
Yeah, Paul, we're going to get the TVs on here in just a second. Technical.
All right.
So McMahon has been auditing the town's finances now for, certainly since I've been here. And we've had great continuity with staff from our side and McMahon's side. And we've had pretty much an uneventful audit. We had thorough review like we always do. And I'll let Paul speak about basically the particulars of what they actually looked at and what their findings were, and any recommendations for improvement. So.
All right.
With that, Paul, you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going to actually share my screen. And as Doug mentioned, we, we actually audit a large number of municipalities. In fact, I had to move the schedule around tonight because I have two city council meetings, so thank you for letting me attend virtually. You should be able to see my cursor moving. And this is actually the Town of Basalt's work. So we schedule basically four people on your engagement for a week, and then one additional person for a couple more weeks to, to wrap up, review, and report. And we always try to have one consistent person on the engagement and one new CPA on the engagement, so you kind of get best of both worlds. But this will just give you a brief idea of kind of what we do. We audit, I think, I don't know, 90, 95% of cast. And an audit consists of planning, fieldwork, and reporting. And so this is the planning stage. And really, it's about running reports, looking at prior years, looking at budget, looking for anything that just doesn't seem to fit analytically with the town's finances. And then the other, we read all your minutes, so I feel like I get to attend all your council meetings even though you don't see me. And then probably the other bigger part of the planning phase is going through the various areas of internal controls. So you can see, this is a list. We have rec, building and planning, cash disbursements, cash receipts, IT, who makes journal entries, police and municipal court, payroll, public works, sales tax, water fund. And then what we're doing is every year, we, we select, we pull databases from each of those departments, and we'll actually do data mining. So use the random sample when you did audits. Now it's about looking at an entire database, looking for outliers, things like that. So like this one is all your credit card transactions for the year. And then we, we zeroed it down to looking at the time the transactions occurred. If it's on a weekend, it tends to be higher risk. Certain vendor codes are higher risk, so we pull those, those credit card statements in this example. And the good news is, there wasn't any areas of concern there. And we're looking at, when we look at internal controls, we're trying to understand who does what, and do we have the proper segregation of duties. Once we're done with the planning, we set about the fieldwork side of it, and that is verifying numbers. So this is the cash and investment section. So when you have a cash account, we'll go through and... It gets depreciated appropriately, it gets included in, on your insurance if it has an impact. We go through payables, making sure that everything went through the payable process appropriately, it's budgeted for, it's paid timely, we're not paying interest, late fees, things like that. And, and that it's coded to the correct account, so when you look at your budget or your financials, you know that utility expenses for utilities and not buried in a payroll expense. We go through all your payroll accounts, so you can see we have all your payroll policies here. FPPA, which is your Fire and Police Pension Association, that's your police pension. We go through kind of all the actuarial requirements that are needed for that. And we reconcile everything back to, back to the, what you report to the IRS as far as available or allowable expenditures for payroll. And we want to make sure that you just complied with all your policies that, that are required. And we filed everything appropriately with the taxing entities. Go through all their current liabilities, which is primarily deposits that you're holding for builders or street cuts, things like that. We go through all, any debts, COPs, leases, things like that, that the town has. When, when, when you sign a legal document or even pass documents signed by council, we want to make sure we complied with all the requirements. So that's kind of all your lease areas. We go through your technology arrangements, they're handled a certain way. Go through equity, making sure you started the year in each fund with where you ended last year, and then do we have the correct amount set aside for Tabor and things like that. Go back through expenses, we want to make sure that, you know, every dollar that goes out is an appropriate expenditure for the town to undertake, it's approved by council, it's budgeted for, and it's coded to the correct line item. And then we have various ballot questions that you passed, had approved in the past. Those usually include promises to the electorate. We want to make sure that the town follows through on that, so that is all, all your ballot questions that have a financial impact. We go through a bunch of state statutes, test journal entries, and then if there's federal grants, we, we would spend some time on federal grants. So that process resulted in 421 different work papers that either your finance team uploaded, or we pulled from other places like banks, vendors. You know, we have access to quite a few other databases that we can agree with, whether it's, you know, we actually audit the county, so we pull property tax billings and things like that for the town there. So all that, that gives you an idea of the amount of work that not only goes in from our side, but for, that your team, and it's pretty much, you know, a small army of very effective people. And they uploaded, you know, a lot of data to the website, to our client portal, so that we can audit it. And the goal is to produce audited financial statements. And they are, let me get in the correct document here, so it's the problem with having 421 different documents. We sometimes, sometimes open the wrong one. The, the Act for Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is right here. And the town, even though, you know, honestly, being kind of a smaller municipality, does a higher level of reporting called an Act for. In the past, you did general purpose financial statements, and a couple of years ago, you stepped up to doing an Act for. And this gets submitted to an organization called GFPA, and they review it also. And so there's a lot of information in here, but it's covered by an independent auditor's report, which would be an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. And it says that all these parties that need the financial statements can rely on it because there's 421 different work papers we looked at behind to prove the numbers in here. And, you know, the parties that use it is not really just council and, you know, council and the electorate, obviously, but it's going to go to all your bondholders, COP holders, goes to your banking relationships, it goes to the federal government, the state government, the Colorado State Auditor. There's just a lot of different parties, insurance, banking, relationships that use it. And I'm not going to really go into much detail on this because the good news is, is that the information you're getting regularly as a council is, is accurate, and would, there's nothing in the audited financial statements that would differ from what you're getting on your reporting. But if you are like me and you love financial statements, enjoy. If you don't, I would encourage you to read Section B, which is the management discussion and analysis. I will just mention that the town's fund balances, you know, look perfectly reasonable, prudent levels of, of fund balance to carry. You can see those on page C5, right here. Across all our funds, you drew down fund balances, but that's primarily because you spent dollars on, on your capital fund. The general fund added 1.2 million, and the dear with 12 million. That's compared to 11 million that went out. The Basalt is a little unusual compared to a lot of municipalities, and the fact that you do have a lot of restricted funds, so just be aware when you're looking at the financial statements, there, you have a lot of funds that can only be used for specific purposes. There is also a letter that should be in your packet, and this is a required letter from an independent auditor to governing boards. And it has a couple of items in here that I'll just walk you through. There, we did implement a new standard called, well, GASB is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They promulgate accounting standards for governments, and they add a new way of calculating compensated absences, which is vacation, sick pay, things like that. So in the past, we had to measure it as if every employee quit at December 31st, how much would you owe? It changed a little bit to more of an estimate. But that was implemented, and it really didn't have a significant impact on, on the town's financial statements. There are some estimates in here, but there's not really anything unusual for, for a municipality like Basalt. How long are your assets going to last? Do you use standard lives? Are you going to collect all your receivables? Historically, you have, and I don't foresee that changing. We do have that estimate on accrued sick leave, which was the new calculation required with Statement 101. Discount rates on leases, accounting standards now don't differentiate between leases and bank debt. They view it all as the same financing vehicle, so we have to run some calculations on that. And then actuarial calculations related to your police pension fund. So those are estimates, but those are pretty common for a municipality. No difficulties encountered in performing in the audit. And one thing that I'll just mention, you know, I'm an auditor, I really don't ever say anything nice. But don't hire Doug to be your town manager because I don't want to lose him as the finance director. So that's my plea. Audit went really smooth. They make sure we have everything we need, and it goes well. Corrected, non-corrected misstatements. This is where their journal entries, there are not material journal entries in the town's required by us to, to where we're willing to express an opinion. And that's critical because it means the regular reporting you're getting is accurate, and that's where you want all your clients to be, but that isn't where they always are. No disagreements with management. The only thing that I would mention is there is another new statement. I don't think it's going to have much of an impact on Basalt, but that's more just an FYI that we're aware of it, and we'll make sure the town complies with all the required generally accepted accounting principles. But other than that, it was, you know, it was a really clean audit and went smoothly. And as a result, your financial statements are done, and, and, and they're there for you to be, for you to accept, hopefully, and then we'll finalize it and get it issued.
Thank you, Paul. Did you have anything you wanted to add on the end of that?
You know, the other thing was, I thought was interesting, you might find of interest, is in the back, you know, the statistical section that talks about the various services the town provides, and how much, you know, streets, how many square miles of streets, and how many, what's the acreage of lots that, you know, all, all of the various assets that we maintain, as police departments represented there, so it just gives a breadth of the town. So if you're looking for some cocktail trivia for July 4th, that'd be a good time to kind of look in there, and then you'd ask something you can talk about.
Basalt by the numbers.
Right? Okay. And I also just want to thank Jenny, because no one does this alone, and Jenny really is the blue here that keeps things together, so appreciate her and her contribution to this, so.
Yeah, thank you all for that. Good to see a clean bill of health, and yeah, looking forward to moving forward for next year. And you guys have any questions, or anything for these guys?
No, I just like to say thank you again. It's been awesome to watch this. Continue to do it, improve, and you guys are always trying to do less, so it's helpful for us.
Yeah. Thank you. On to your, how many more do you have to do, Paul? Two more tonight?
I have the Town of Granby next, so thank you. You know, there's a lot of trust that goes into the relationship with independent auditor, and we don't take that lightly. But you guys have a great finance team and good financial results, so thank you.
Thanks, Paul. You.
Before we move on, we will typically have a motion to accept the audit.
That was added to the.
The town council accepts the 2024 audit.
Second.
It's been moved. It's been moved to second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So it's official. All right, and Elise, you're just in time. We're running a little ahead, actually.
There you are.
Yeah, so your timing is impeccable. So next up, we have Item 6B, LiftUp Presentation Update with Elise.
And my computer is dead, so I'm just going to have to go over.
All right, we got the slides.
Come on up. Do you want to charge her? So most of you know me, I'm Elise Hoddle. I am the interim executive director slash director of operations, depending on who asked me at LiftUp. This is Claus Coker, he is one of our board members.
And I live in Glenwood.
In Glenwood, and also a photographer. So the first thing I wanted to do is just kind of give you some backstory here on what's happening, why I'm here, that sort of thing. In early January slash late December, LiftUp lost three of their directors all at once, so a total void in leadership. So I was brought in, along with two colleagues, to kind of step into that void. And once we stepped in, we realized that some mismanagement had happened, and that the budget was running at a deficit. And so then we sort of dug into it a little bit farther, a little bit farther, to figure out what was going on. And that led us to come to all of the communities to kind of share where LiftUp is at, and to also ask for help. So I want to acknowledge upfront, thank you very much for the tobacco tax grant. So we're sort of, we sort of did things out of order here, but we still wanted to give you the presentation so that you know what's going on with LiftUp. So, next slide. So this is what I'm going to cover today. For anybody that is not familiar with LiftUp, who we are, what the current state of food insecurity is, how we're responding, and how you can help, which you already did. Next slide. So LiftUp is the leader in providing equitable food security for individuals and families, educating, building understanding, and support to end hunger from Parachute to Aspen. So we serve all of the communities between Parachute and Aspen in one way or another. And we'll get to that farther in the presentation. Next slide. So what do we do? Here are the programs that we do. We have, so this is a little bit out of date. We actually have five fixed pantries and one mobile pantry. And the fixed pantries are Parachute, Rifle, Newcastle, Glenwood Springs, and Carbondale. Up until May, we had one in Aspen as well. And we also serve silt with our mobile market. So that's what's new for 2025, is that mobile market, and we're looking to get that up valley. It is outfitted as like an actual little shopping experience, you can go in and choose your food, et cetera. I'll show you pictures in a bit. We have three soup kitchens. Two are actually in operation and have been for a while in Glenwood and Rifle, and then we're adding a third in Parachute. And we have 72-hour bags. This was a program that was started about three years ago in partnership with the West Mountain Health Alliance, West Mountain Regional Health Alliance. And it identified sort of a lack of systems thinking in terms of folks that were leaving rehab, hospitals, clinics, you know, identified as, you know, needed extra, a little bit extra help. So the 72-hour bags are distributed by 10 partners of ours that are usually, most of which are in the like health and human services community. And it's 70, called 72 hours because the idea is to get you through the weekend. So if you're discharged on a Friday from some kind of a rehab, let's say, that you immediately have food to set you up for a good experience over the weekend until you can get to another one of our mobile pantries, the distribution, whatever it might be. And then finally, we also distribute two federal programs, the CFSP, which is also known as Everyday Eats, that's for seniors under a certain income level, and the TFAP, which is the Emergency Food Assistance Program, and that is also an income qualified program for families and adults. Next slide.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is there any risk right now, things that are going on at the federal level with those programs, or?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So not only is there a risk of those programs getting cut, but there is the risk of a trickle-down effect. So Feeding America is sort of the federal level food bank, and then they subsidize Food Bank of the Rockies, which is sort of our state-level food bank, and then, of course, we purchase food from Food Bank of the Rockies. And so if Food Bank of the Rockies is not receiving the subsidies at the federal level, then they're going to have to raise their prices, therefore our prices get raised. The other way that we may see this happening is in reductions to SNAP benefits and to WIC, which are two other programs that are distributed through the county health and human services programs.
Thank you.
Yep. So that was negative, now positive. We have this great new mobile trailer, and as you can see, sort of in the upper right-hand corner, there's little cabinets, and so there's stocked food. What you can't see is there's also a refrigerator and a freezer in here, so we have dairy, produce, meat, cheese, the whole nine yards. So this is, our trial run is in silt. We want to take this out to more places, and what we're lacking right now to be able to do that is a truck with the towing capacity. So Feeding America is sort of the federal level food bank. And then they subsidize Food Bank of the Rockies, which is sort of our state-level food bank. And then, of course, we purchase food from Food Bank of the Rockies. And so if Food Bank of the Rockies is not receiving the subsidies at the federal level, then they're going to have to raise their prices, therefore our prices get raised. The other way that we may see this happening is in reductions to SNAP benefits and to WIC, which are two other programs that are distributed through the county health and human services programs.
Thank you.
Yep. So that was negative, now positive. We have this great new mobile trailer. And as you can see, sort of in the upper right-hand corner, there's little cabinets. And so there's stocked food. What you can't see is there's also a refrigerator and a freezer in here. So we have dairy, produce, meat, cheese, the whole nine yards. So this is, our trial run is in silt. We want to take this out to more places. And what we're lacking right now to be able to do that is a truck with the towing capacity. This is heavier, once it's fully loaded, it was heavier than we realized. So we're still trying to do some strategic planning around getting a vehicle that can tow this. And that's sort of part of this larger ask that we've been doing out to the different communities. Next slide. Another big program that we're excited about that's been going on since 2020 is partnering with local farms. And so we have two far, excuse me, 10 farms that we are currently partnering with. And we, in January, pay out forward contracts so that they know and can plan ahead that we're going to buy X amount of produce from them or meat or dairy. And they can use that forward funding to buy seed stock, to buy cattle, whatever it is, to do some, make hiring decisions, that sort of thing. So we pay out about 50% of our food costs to these, both the forward contracts and then purchasing the food once it's actually grown. And so to your point, David, about federal cuts, this is also a way to help local farmers if the USDA is cutting any federal funding to local farmers. So you'll notice Two Roots is on there, they're over just off of, by Emma Schoolhouse, so right here in our community. Next. So this is what we're seeing in terms of growth. So since COVID, we've seen 138% increase in visits. So visits are, they can be duplicated. So this is like the total times that a person comes to any kind of distribution, a pantry, a mobile, et cetera. The guest is intended to be a unique individual. However, I want to be upfront that we had seen a lot of multiple names, multiple identities, a little bit of taking advantage of the system. And so we put sort of guardrails in place. So this number may be overinflated in terms of actual individuals, but it also shows a little bit of a desperation of people that they're having, they're feeling like they need to create these alternate, you know, identities in order to get the food that they need. In a perfect scenario, we wouldn't worry about that, but we, you know, are in a financial crisis, so we have to be efficient with how we distribute food and make sure that we're doing it equitably, making sure that everybody that needs food is getting it. So I'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide. So to your point, David, these are the, these are the things that we're concerned about right now. And of course, Colorado having a billion-dollar budget shortfall is not going to be able to backfill any of those programs. So we really do have to look to the local communities to help us out. And we've seen this, you know, cost of living increase is certainly not helping anything. More people are having to choose between paying their utility bill, paying their rent. And if there's, you know, there's no way around paying your utility bill or your rent, you've got to pay those things. So if there's a way to supplement resources in another manner, i.e. food, then people are taking advantage of that. So we don't foresee this, you know, declining anytime soon. We expect it to continue to rise. And then post-COVID, what we're finding is that some folks who either lost their job or were unemployed for a certain period of time kind of used up some of their cushion. So normally what they might have had to fall back on is not there anymore. And we're talking about, like, this is sort of at the poverty level that that, that we're seeing that. Next slide. So this is just a reminder that, you know, folks are moving throughout the valley. You know, the workforce is very fluid. And so when we say we're, we're serving Aspen to parachute, we're trying to, to pick up those people wherever they are in that migration. So Harvest for Hunger now has a pantry in Aspen where ours was before. We also distribute that T federal program, the TFAP. It's being distributed at the Aspen Chapel right now. So we have little places all along the valley where we're trying to pick up wherever those folks are moving throughout the valley. Next slide. So this is what we're looking at in terms of actual numbers. You'll notice that Picking and Eagle County are actually higher than Garfield County. And the reason for that, of course, is cost of living. So that's definitely influencing those numbers. But it's a little scary to see that we have child hunger above 10% at all in the state of Colorado. Next slide. So I want to be clear that Lift Up is not working in a vacuum. We are part of a regional coalition called McFins, which stands for the Mountain Coalition for Nutrition, or excuse me, Food and Nutrition Security. And there are many players in this. So there's Harvest for Hunger, who I mentioned, that's taken over the Aspen pantry. Valley Meals and More does pre-made senior meals. Eagle Valley Community Foundation is serving this portion of Eagle County. Food Bank of the Rockies has a couple of distributions throughout the valley. And then West Mountain Regional Health Alliance, Garfield County, Picking County, Eagle County, Human Health, Health and Human Services are referral agencies, so they send people to us. Next slide. So this organization has been kicked off in 2023, 20, yes, 2023, created a strategic plan for the, for the three years, and identified the need for less than 25 miles between food distribution sites. So that's why we purchased the mobile trailer, is we're hoping to be able to take it to some of those places we aren't currently serving. Like Redstone is a, is a perfect example. If somebody is, you know, homebound and can't get down from Redstone, like, we want to be able to come to them. The food hub is the regional warehouse in Glenwood Springs. And that serves two purposes. One, it's a place where folks can come together to store food. We have cold storage. We have some great ideas for like a commercial kitchen, that sort of thing. Those are all on hold right now with our current financial state. But it also reduces our vehicle miles. And of course, there are some climate implications for that, not having to travel. Our original warehouse was in parachute, so we're going from parachute to Aspen. So this allows us to be a little more central and go out. And then fresh look are individuals who actually benefited in the past from our services. So they're only donating, you know, maybe $50 a month as sort of paying it forward-back, however you want to think about that, for the services we provided. And with the cost of living going up and, you know, the inflation going up, they're feeling the squeeze as well. And so it's not that we're seeing the numbers of donors go down, it's that we're seeing the amount donors are giving going down. So maybe they were $50 before, now they're $30. And so that's creating that deficit. Next slide.
Are most of your donors in that ballpark as far as the amount, in other words, is more kind of grassroots or they're, are there big donors too? Like how?
I mean, I would, this is anecdotal because I don't actually see the donations that come in online. I only see the checks that come in. But anecdotally, I would say the checks that come in are, like, the vast majority of them are in the $10 to $100 range.
Hmm, okay. Is, is that also, then since you've had mismanagement issues that this dropped off, does that have anything to do with it, that leadership wasn't on top of it or are there?
No, no, ironically, where we're seeing the disconnect with the leadership is those donors that were being stewarded at sort of the higher level, where that relationship kind of was not, there was not a like smooth handoff. And so that's more where we're finding that to be an issue.
That answers my question though.
Is that an opportunity you guys are looking at kind of trying to reinvigorating?
Yes.
Because that's.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that I'll get to, so this is actually the perfect slide. So we, you know, we had this whole chain of events that we identified as contributing to this, creating this financial situation, this deficit. And so we wanted to like, you know, put our hand down and say like, no more, let's, let's address this, let's take care of it. Next slide. So we went into debt for the Glenwood Springs facility under the impression that we would have the support of the Mountain Coalition for Food Interest and Security. We do have their support emotionally. We are not, they do, they don't, they're in the same, you know, crisis that we're in in terms of, you know, it's a lot harder to find grants and, you know, the funding to get these things done. We talked about unprecedented demand, we talked about reduction in donations, and then we talked about the fallout of federal and state funding potentially harming us. Next slide. So then that gets us to what did we do? How did we respond? So the first thing we did is we identified that drive-through pantries were a source of waste. They were a legacy program from COVID where you could just drive through, there was good social distancing, you'd just get a bag or a box. The problem with that is it wasn't necessarily the food you wanted. So there was a lot of waste, people were pulling out what they wanted and just either throwing away or giving away the stuff that was left over. So we stopped that, which also helped free up some staff time. So we've decreased our staff from what it was at the end of the year. And additionally, we have delayed hiring an executive director of programs or an operations director, which is why I'm interim, I'm on a contract. We negotiated a payment hold on our mortgage for six months so that we could work through some of these programmatic and operational efficiencies. We have been trying to offset cost with food drives so that we don't have to purchase as much food. You may have seen us at City Market. One of the big things that we did is implement a new software system that allows us to tie all of our pantries together. And so we could put limits on how much people could use them. So we currently have a one, one household visit per week limit at all of our pantries. And we can see if they went to Carbondale and then try and turn around and go to silt. So we now are able to monitor that. And then simultaneously, the inventory side of it will actually be able to keep much better track than we were previously about what is going in and out of the warehouse, so that when we're ordering, we're not ordering the wrong thing and then having product just sit stale on the shelf. We closed the Glenwood Springs thrift store, which was really unfortunate, but it was actually not adding to the bottom line. We had three thrift stores, we're down to two. The idea is that they're supposed to be the third leg of the stool. So we have grant writing, we have fundraising, and we have our thrift stores contributing to our program's costs. And I already mentioned the guest limits, so.
For the, what's kind of the mix, you know, previously and what are you hoping to do as far as food drives versus, I guess, getting it from Food Bank of the Rockies or somewhere else? Like what, how much do food drives kind of contribute to your inventory?
So first of all, I want to be clear that we purchase all of our food from Food Bank of the Rockies. There has been some misconception that it's donated and that is incorrect, so. And then, so food drives, any food that we get is a bonus. And we also do gleaning, so that's, we call that food rescue. So Harvest for Hunger does the Upper Roanoke Valley, we do Glenwood to parachute in the Colorado River Valley. And that allows us to collect food that would otherwise go in the landfill and give that out at pantries. So food drives and food rescue are items that we are able to just give away free because we receive them for free, so we're just passing it through to our clients.
Does that offset any of the cost for you not having to buy as much or mean?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So we don't have to buy as much in order to have, so I guess I should back up and explain. So we have a point system for our pantries. So a household of one would have 40 points to start with, and then you get additional points for each member of your household. And so the things that we have to purchase, we have to put a point value on, but the things that we don't purchase are zero points. So that means that a person could potentially come into the pantry and take all zero-point items and that would cost us nothing, and yet they're going home with a full belly. So just to give you an idea, the Aspen food drive in front of City Market, we came away with about a ton of food, like a literal ton, 2,000 pounds of food that was donated. And that's the, that's how we measure the donated food is in poundage.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah. Next slide. I don't know who's doing slides. So, so that's sort of the efficiency side of things. On the fundraising side of things, and this is addressing the question that you asked a little bit earlier, David, is we've hired a new development director who is reaching out to those high-worth donors who is trying to pick up the stewardship that was sort of left in limbo with the departure of previous leadership. We also had a fantastic board matching opportunity in April. So the board put up $63,500 of their own funds to be matched to create a lure for folks to want to, to donate. And, and we did see a response to that. I mean, we literally had people that would call them that were like, I want to donate, but I, I want to make sure that it counts towards the board match. So we know that that was successful. And it was successful, you know, in that we received that money. We continue to be actively grant writing. I think that segment has been fairly successful, but we have seen, you know, with more nonprofits, you know, going after the same amount of funds, that those are, we're still getting the grants, but they're starting to be smaller amounts each time. And then, of course, I already mentioned that the development director is targeting those high net worth donors. Next slide. So we are looking to fill a gap of $2.5 million. That's huge. I want to be clear that that is both, that ask is, is being spread around to all the communities. And what that kind of breaks down to is the $1.5 million for the food hub in Glenwood Springs to pay off that mortgage. We also have existing mortgages on the parachute facility that used to be the warehouse that's now a thrift store. And the rifle facility that used to be our headquarters office that's also a thrift store. And we have pantries in both of those locations as well, so we're looking to pay off that debt. We have debt on some of our trucks. And so there's a piece of that that we like to pay off. We were lucky that we got a fantastic grant from the Yampa Valley Community Foundation for the mobile trailer. So that actually is paid off, but we could use a truck to pull it, as I mentioned before. Probably need something pretty heavy duty, so we're thinking $50,000 for that. And then there's some built-in forward funding in there in order to get our programming set so that we don't have to come back and make this ask again. And that we also have the funding for next year's Farm to Food Pantry to make sure that we can support our farmers as well as our pantries. And next slide. So I just want to be clear what's at stake here. I talked about the 72-hour bags, that's a partner program that we fund 100%, so we might have to cancel that. The extended table, oh, this is an old slide deck that doesn't have the numbers in it. So extended table serves about 17,000 guests a year. The diaper program, we provide about 700 and some odd diapers a year. And the thought process behind that is if we're offsetting the cost of diapers, then that's more money than somebody has to spend on food or utilities or rent, whatever that might be. Potentially, we would have to close the parachute and rifle thrift stores and sell off those properties. And of course, there's pantry locations there, so then we'd have to figure out how to still serve folks in those locations. We have three distribution sites where we're actually paying to distribute food. So potentially, that would be maybe an opportunity to like recap a little bit of money, try and have the mobile trailer there. Again, we still need the truck. But the really scary thing is if we were to try and make our budget balanced today, we would have to turn away one and three guests in order to make that happen. So that is not, not a scenario we ever want to get to, and, you know, we hope that we don't. So it's part of the reason we're on the roadshow. And then I think that might be the last slide. I kind of already talked about this. You know, if we pay off the capital debt, then instead of paying money towards mortgages and interest and insurance, we're putting food in bellies. That's the last slide. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Do you have any questions?
You all have questions?
Yeah, I just, the count is getting higher when you talk about insecurities, whether it's food, housing, childcare, mental health, healthcare, elderly.
Maslow's pyramid is crumbling.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we talk a lot about collective impact and local impact and things like that. And I think the steps that were taken today at the retreat, and this is just my opinion, have sort of changed the course a little bit to where this group, and I've been around here long enough to separate myself from this group, I feel comfortable doing that because it's to their, to acknowledge them for bringing a new message. because it's to their, to acknowledge them for bringing a new message, maybe to the community. We haven't talked about how to deliver it, but we created sort of a philosophy that we wanted to be able to direct funding to meaningful priorities that we established, but that we also wanted the ability to participate in future opportunities that support the health and welfare of the community, which is a different model. And I think that where I'm coming from on this is that if you add up the beast here and you include all of these things, it's a daunting commitment. And I'm not just saying from Basalt, it's a daunting commitment from everyone. But my question is, what, what is the approach that will get us moving forward on solving these insecurities other than just handing out money? And where is the cultural shift going to happen that we recognize that, and I think today we took a big step with the mobile home park to fix that and stabilize their economic future because we're trying to remove their housing insecurities? That's going to be tremendous benefit, and it's going to have a bigger impact, not a 1, 2, 3, but a 2, 4, 8, 16 kind of impact, right? And those are the things that aren't getting through, those kinds of decision-making processes are not getting through to some of our regional partners. In, in order for all boats to float, whatever they say, they have to shift gears to a different mindset and a, and a different way of looking at this so that the community's health can be considered first. And there's a number of initiatives that have popped up lately that are starting to address that. So I think it's potentially fixable, but it's going to take a group like yours, a group that's dealing with mental health, a group that's dealing with, you know, the resident status particularly lately, which is, that's something that we want to tiptoe around but not dive fully into. But that, that indirectly, solutions to this, these insecurities would directly impact people that are really insecure about whether or not they're going to be able to continue to even be here. So, you know, regardless of, they seem to solve the other problems, that one's almost, didn't have a solution yet. But so I, I think about this a lot. You know, I've, it hasn't gotten any less insecure in decades.
No, it's got worse.
It's got worse. So wh- why? And why are, where are we going with this at the end of the day? And congratulations to these electeds today because I think they have come to that conclusion. Maybe not all at the same time, but definitely today was a milestone in that thought process. So I, I don't know where we go from here, but I do know that in my opinion, we did recognize this as one of those opportunities that we had let slip for other reasons. And now we're seeing the impact of not staying the course on some things that we should have. So, you know, it's not a criticism of anybody that did anything in the past, but it's just a fact of life. And it's a, in a linear valley, it's just that much more impactful. So I don't know what you guys think, but I don't know what your ask is, I don't know what the other partners are willing to do. It's surprising that your parent organization is not there.
Who's our parent organization?
Mountain, McFins.
Cool acronym.
Oh.
You know, that's kind of interesting.
Yeah, so McFins tries to identify funding opportunities that are not in conflict with any of their member organizations. So that really is a very narrow niche that they can, very small pond that they can fish in. So that's part of the reason why they're not, their ability is limited.
How's it get bigger? How's the pond get bigger, other than what you're suggesting you're going to do? I mean, from a, that's a government agency, right, basically?
No, no, it's a nonprofit.
Nonprofit?
Yeah.
But it's a coalition of Picking County's Health and Human Services and Eagles and Garfield. So it basically is funded as an institution.
Right, so we gave this same presentation this morning to Garfield County Board of County Commissioners, and Picking County's representative on McFins was there, the West Mountain Regional Health Alliance representative from McFins was there, one of their Health and Human Services folks was there. So we, let's, as I said, we have the broad support of the coalition, but we're all struggling for funding.
All, all entities like yours.
All the entities within the coalition as well as the coalition umbrella itself.
The umbrella doesn't want to go and cannibalize the member organization's funding sources?
Exactly, right.
Okay.
The government's funding sources.
And whether that be.
Well, and grant writing, you know, so we can go to the same philanthropic organizations that the individual members go to if the grant is specifically asking for a coalition response. So those are kind of the distinctions where it's like an individual organization can apply for the grant versus where it needs to be a coalition. And those grants are out there, and we are seeking those out as the coalition.
Okay, well, I don't know, that's just my.
I mean, I think one thing to keep in mind is that the work of Lift Up is, the hope is, and that in theory, it is supplemental food. So to your point about the mobile home community, I mean, that's actually a perfect example. Those folks are diverting their resources in another direction right now. So we can support them by providing supplemental food. Hopefully, this period of time will pass, they will no longer need the supplemental food, and they can move forward on their path. So that's kind of the ideal scenario.
Well, that's exactly the point I was going to make. But that, you know, that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah. Did you have anything to add? Klaus just came to look pretty.
I talked this morning, so.
You're full.
Good shot of the full moon coming up over here in about an hour.
Nice.
It sounds like there was some pretty serious financial mishaps or mismanagement, and obviously now they have you, and that's awesome, and you're taking a strategic look at things. But can you speak to what other kind of governance and accountability measures are now in place to help get Lift Up back on the right footing?
Yeah, absolutely. So we now have, so there's always been a finance committee, it's always met monthly. But now what we're doing is, as we look at the P&Ls from the previous month, if it is above or below a certain threshold, then that triggers that it goes to the executive committee for a recommendation and then to the, gets raised to the board for a vote. And that recommendation might be cut programs, so this sort of goes to what I was talking about in the slide. If, let's say we had a wildly successful month of donations, then the recommendation might be to devote more resources to, towards, you know, a mortgage or, you know, a program or whatever it might be. So we have sort of that progression now in place. We also have bimonthly check-ins just to look at like what was high or low that month, like what caused a spike. So there's like a lot more eyes on the financials right now and being really clear about what, how much money is the bank, how much is our burn rate, do we need to make adjustments accordingly? Thanks.
Has there been, you guys have some assets that could be monetized and like kind of, you know, put it in a different arrangement, like so you could lease it back or, and I know like when we're in our discussions as far as, well, how do we do what we want to do, we look at the same kind of things, right? Like what could we do to want to, yeah, monetize something to work on something else? I mean, that's, it's a typical kind of exercise. I, so have you guys had those conversations? Those are hard conversations, I'm not, I don't want to.
Yeah, and.
I want to acknowledge that, but I mean, like, these are hard times, like what?
Yeah.
What have you looked at there?
Yeah, and so that was one of the things that was mentioned. It said close thrift stores because we don't want to like send panic waves out into the community, but what we would really be looking at is selling off those assets. If push came to shove, hopefully we won't get there. Klaus is on the financial committee with me, so he can probably speak to this as well. But yes.
So you have a thrift store, pantry in Parachute, one in Rifle, that's producing money, but there's also the cost of the mortgage and insurance, so maybe you sell it, you can sell it now for a lot more than we got it. So that's really the only money we have, a sense of assets, it's those two.
Well, and we have our reserve.
Reserve.
Yeah.
Could you lease back your warehouse? I mean, could you, I mean, could you sell that and lease it back?
I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's a potential idea. The, well, not the Glenwood warehouse. That one has been identified as the priority to keep and to pay off. It would be the old warehouse in Parachute that Klaus was just referring to, or the rifle property might have value because it's right downtown rifle. We don't want to get to that point, we're hoping not to get to that point, but yes, we have considered that those, that's a possibility, a very real possibility if we get to that point.
Is there seasonality to the requests? Is there more in the summer and less in the winter, or more in the winter and less in the summer?
The guests, you mean, or?
More traffic to you?
No, it's pretty steady.
You stay?
Yep.
There's a seasonality to the donations at the end of the year, everyone from, you know, October on, that's when the money comes in. So the beginning of the year, we're like running on empty until everyone, the giving season, then money comes in. So that's kind of hard, too.
That's a very good point.
So you need reserves to cash flow your first quarter and all that kind of stuff?
Exactly.
Yeah. So if there was a Band-Aid or something, approach or a fix that was six-month obligation?
Well, we did negotiate a six-month hold on our Glenwood Springs property, but we're coming to the end of that six months.
Who holds the mortgage?
The Glenwood Springs mortgage? I don't know the name of the LLC, do you?
No, but I know who owns it.
Well.
I can't.
It's one of our board members.
Which is a good thing because he's in there watching what we're doing, but he's owing so much love, too.
He's definitely invested in our success, literally.
Well, appreciate you both coming down and talking to us and educating us on this and, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
Good presentation, it really was.
And we, you know, we encourage folks to visit our pantries, to use our services, you know, as long as we're here, that's what we're here for. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we have one item left. Yeah. Council actions, item 7A, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number eight series of 2025. An ordinance of the town of Basalt, Colorado approving amendments to town code section 16 dot four, definitions section 16 dash 22, schedules of uses and requirements, and the addition of section 16 dash 192, natural medicine for the purpose of regulating the sale, manufacturing, and use of natural medicine in Basalt, Colorado. And James, you're up.
Thank you, yeah. This is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance on code amendments for the purpose of establishing regulations to regulate the sale, manufacturing, and use of natural medicine in Basalt. As introduced at first reading, Colorado voters approve proposition 122, allowing supervised use of psychedelic mushrooms, which is also known as natural medicine in the act for medical purposes. The act also prohibits local governments from banning them while allowing local governments to regulate the time, place, and manner of operations of use of the mushrooms. The town attorney's office and the planning staff, excuse me, have been collaborating on draft code amendments to regulate the sale, manufacturing, and use of the medicine. Staff felt it appropriate to regulate the natural medicine in a similar way to the way the town regulated medical marijuana when it was first legalized with a cautious approach until community impact amendments.
Recording in progress.
Establish, has done some more evaluation of whether the town could prohibit manufacturing and cultivation and determine that we.
I'll just add a couple of quick things. I think James largely covered it, and this might have already been addressed at, at first reading, but just from a big picture regulatory approach to natural medicine, this is, is a different approach than for marijuana. Marijuana is something, but in order to have a business, you need a state license and you need a local license. And unless the use is authorized within a local jurisdiction, it's prohibited. And it's, it's the opposite with natural medicine in that a state license is required and there's the ability for local governments to regulate natural medicine is through zoning. And in the absence of any zoning, you know, there'd be permitted uses with probably the most akin use to what that natural medicine use would be. And so there is authorization under the Regulatory Act for natural medicine to implement zoning regulations, which is what this ordinance is all about, and restricting the areas where a business could operate and incorporating some of those distance restrictions and so forth. And so there's not any specific authorization from the town to implement this business, but this zoning ordinance does restrict the areas in which a business could be located. As James mentioned, since first reading, yeah, there were a few amendments made for this second reading, you know, one to address the manufacturing, testing, cultivation uses, and then the second was to address that those pre-existing or soon-to-be pre-existing uses, uses that kind of commenced their path towards being a healing center before this ordinance was brought forward. And so it seems prudent to acknowledge those within the ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
What precipitated, looking at the cultivation thing again, since first reading, like what
I frankly wasn't at first reading, but it was just kind of taking a fresh look at the ordinance between first and second reading, and it was, oh, hey, we see that these uses aren't permitted anywhere, and there needs to be some location in which those uses need to be permitted to comply with the state statute.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Just curious. Well, this is a public hearing, and I know we have one person who wants to make public comments, so I will open the public hearing, and if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. Brooke Allen, I'm a resident on Super Circle, and I'm your local dermatologist. I've been here about 15 years, and thanks for the opportunity. First, I'd like to thank the town, the town council for having the foresight to recognize that treatment centers or healing centers are a positive addition to our community. It's also important that we come together to discuss the benefits of natural medicine, including psilocybin, as well as the impact on our neighbors here in Basalt. And I just wanted to emphasize also, I agree with you, unlike legalized cannabis, Colorado's regulated natural medicine program does not include any retail sales or dispensaries. And also just one other point about Prop 122, it's actually not only allowed for people to use with medical conditions. So individuals over 21 can use that for personal growth use as well, and they usually do that on their own. As I said, my name is Dr. Brooke Allen, I operate NeuroSpa in Willets, where we will be opening a natural medicine healing center in the coming months within a medical center setting. And while I appreciate the town's need to draft an ordinance around this issue, I'd like to speak up for non-medical spaces tonight as an alternative option for facilitated journeys. These medicines are revolutionary. The psychedelic assisted therapy that is provided in the setting of a healing center can be truly life-changing for many, many people. And our goal should not be to decrease, our goal should be, excuse me, to decrease the barriers, not increase the barriers and to access in a thoughtful and measured way. So in Colorado, we have a tragic distinction of being in the top five states for suicide rates. We also have a lot of veterans in our rural communities. And according to Mental Health America, we are number, we are the very last state in ranking in terms of mental health services. So my reason for being here is really just to, to give. So my reason for being here is really just to give the council the opportunity to consider not holding this restriction of having this medicine in these healing centers only happen in a medical setting. Allowing these facilitated journeys to occur in non-medical spaces not only enables us to serve those who need it most, but it puts Basalt on the cutting edge of proven, effective medical science for all. At NeuroSpa, we welcome the idea that this should be an inclusive opportunity and urge the council to follow the lead of the state of Colorado in allowing these treatments to move forward outside of strictly interpreted medical settings like ours. We believe that the state of Colorado has done an excellent job in placing restrictions into their regulated model for natural medicine in terms of who can provide that treatment, what training is needed, ethical considerations, and what support natural medicine providers themselves will also need after doing this work. And while nothing is risk-free, psilocybin mushrooms have an extremely strong safety profile, even relative to substances like Tylenol. In Oregon, where a similar regulated process has been in place for over a year, out of over seven thousand individuals who've been treated, there were only five emergency calls, less than zero point one percent. From my personal perspective, it would not make sense to limit administration of natural medicines such as psilocybin in the regulated model to only medical settings in our town. The state has not done that.
Set your timer.
It's time.
Oh, I'll wrap it up. The state has not done that, no other jurisdiction has done it, and I would respectfully ask council to reconsider adding, reconsider that they are adding an additional restriction we don't need. I'm also available for comment if you have any questions, or I can pass along my email. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and the information. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Participate in the public hearing? I don't know if there's anybody online, it doesn't look like it. I'll close the public hearing and open up the floor for us for questions and comments.
I am curious what other municipalities are doing. Are they similarly imposing additional zoning restrictions on top of the state?
I think that's, yeah, and it's, the timing has been different for every city and town, but I think the trend is that there's zoning restrictions on each of the different classes in natural medicine business uses, including, yeah, on each of them, including to within specific zone districts through a special use review process. That seems to be the trend on how many jurisdictions are handling this new world of natural medicine businesses.
And the thought process behind our zoning restrictions is just to be in line with what was done when marijuana was first legalized medicinally?
I'll let James speak to some of this, but I think the thought process was an analysis of what zone districts would this type of use be most appropriate and most similar to analogous uses that are already pre-existing.
Which included medical marijuana, the way it was kind of introduced in the town of Basalt originally. So, yeah, consistent to take a cautious approach, I guess, initially, and then kind of see how it works and make sure that there aren't significant impacts. And then, like with medical marijuana, it opened up to broader zoning afterwards.
So this is to slow the evolution of that process a little bit and start at square one as opposed to where we are with marijuana right now?
Right, which is broader.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I mean, from my perspective, I guess, I just don't. I mean, if it, I guess, it doesn't make sense to me to kind of do this because we eventually will probably, most likely, if we're using marijuana, medical marijuana, as sort of the pathway, sort of guideline, we get there anyways. So I think I would be supportive of not being so restrictive.
Are you aware, Jeff, of other municipalities where they allow psilocybin treatments outside of medical facilities?
I have not looked into that. I just know from a zoning standpoint how they've treated it.
So the state, I'm just looking to hear, like, who has what restrictions? The state has the thousand-foot restriction in the Enabling Act.
Yeah.
And they also have a licensing process.
Right.
So, you know, if they, if you just follow the state rules, you have to be licensed and go through whatever process that is. With, including, I'm assuming there's safeguards. I don't, I don't know what the Enabling Act includes. And be a thousand feet away from schools, which is kind of a minimum set of safeguards. Just, it's table stakes. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I think, you know, some of the thinking on the ordinance as well is that natural medicine business uses are not defined uses under the code. So there's a question of if someone is seeking to implement this use, what is it? What zone district is it permitted in? And I think the analysis is what's the most similar use? So in this case, you know, a medical clinic or a medical center. And this is to help define a distinct use category so it can be then identified. It's not that in the absence of this ordinance that the, I think, a healing center could be established in a bank or something like that, you know, or a property that is restricted to non-medical uses, let me say that. And so just if there's a desire, which is totally the council's decision to make, if there's a desire to expand the areas in which the, they'd want to permit through either special use or just as a permitted use, the areas in which, like in particular, a healing center could be located, that's, that's something we can do through this ordinance.
I personally would rather proceed with caution and then maybe loosen restrictions later. I don't want to just assume that, I mean, it probably will go as well as medical marijuana, but, you know, but maybe that was also more successful because we, you know, had a more narrow view when we started. So for me, I think that restricting it to the medical, medical center at this point, I'm in support of that.
How, just a kind of wonky question. How often does a new use come up? Like, you know what I mean? In other words, if you have a new use, like, you got to figure out where that thing can happen in the town. I mean, like, so, and we're like, okay, we'll start here because this is what we did before, like, almost twenty years ago. But, I mean.
I would say every couple of months, we have to try to figure out where a certain idea fits into the use table. But, but, you know, usually you can find a kind of comparable use to most ideas that come up for a business. You know, I think with like marijuana and natural medicine, it hasn't really easily fit. So I think that's generally why we're here to, with code amendments, to look at a use. And, you know, occasionally, we do come with other uses to include in the code, but usually we try to figure out where, where an idea fits into existing uses.
It's my understanding, I mean, the state process to get licensed must be fairly rigorous. And there probably are a lot of qualifications and, so I guess, I just want to make sure that we're understanding, that I'm understanding, that like, it's not like I can just be like, I'm going to start being a psilocybin facilitator because like, I would not be qualified under the eyes of the state. So I guess I want to make that clarifying point because it's important to be like, if we don't imply these zoning restrictions, it's not as though anybody can just start doing this. They still have to qualify under this, the state.
Yeah, my mind, the state is taking the responsibility for ensuring health and safety.
Correct.
But we have to figure out the zoning because it's a new use.
Correct.
So, yeah.
And I think the point is also that, you know, not every psychologist or neurologist is based in these medical facilities, you know, you're, it's something based in Willets here.
Yeah.
And so are we now then restricting, putting this in these so-called safeguarded areas? Are we actually really restricting someone?
Who is qualified.
Yeah, who's qualified.
My psychiatrist is not in these zones. But like, if they qualify under the state to provide this treatment, then I, as a patient, am being denied the opportunity to receive this treatment just because their office is elsewhere.
Right.
Yeah, it is, it is kind of funny to me that you can have doctors not in medical facilities.
These kinds of doctors.
Even though I think of wherever that doctor is, is kind of their medical facility.
The kind of doctor you would go to see for this kind of treatment. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, but unless they happen to rent office space in there, and that's.
Totally. But I think most mental medical professionals, whether they're actual neurologists or psychiatrists or, you know, someone who'd be administering this treatment probably isn't in the same office as my orthopedic, you know?
How do you get to be a tester? I guess it also feels like if, if it truly has the benefits that it has for mental health, you know, it feels like, you know, we're restricting that, that process, that ability for peoples to get aid as, as easy as it could be, you know?
Yeah, I don't feel great about trying to regulate it in that way. Like, I'd feel better, like, we're there to facilitate the zoning this more, not talk about health and safety. That's not our bailiwick.
No, I mean, I agree.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, I like this.
So then how do we, like, solve for it, right? Like, how do we?
Do we have to just do nothing?
Ban the zoning, you know, but in a way that makes sense? I don't know enough about zoning districts personally to be able to answer that. It's truly just a question.
Currently in the draft ordinance, the additional use of natural medicine healing center is put within the definition of medical center in the use table. If you wanted it to be allowed in the C three zone district just as a use without having to be in a medical center, you could simply take that natural medicine healing center out of the medical center use classification and just put it in as a separate use in the zone district. Would you agree with that, Jeff? You could just?
Create it as a distinct use instead of within the medical definition of medical center?
Yeah.
And then have it as a permitted use within C three or a special?
Permitted or a special review. Probably have to be special review because we've got the other qualifications for that have to be.
It's almost like you'd want to put it wherever there was therapy, like, like, mental health therapy services is where it would go.
Which is probably broader C three district.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's broader C three.
But then special review, but it at least opens up. So then if somebody in that broader C three district is a licensed therapist, has their state license, would come before council and say, I'd like to, you know, do this, then it's kind of as easy as us saying yes.
Yeah, and through the special review, there would be like requirements for security plans and.
Kind of like a liquor scenario.
So can I ask the applicant a question?
We're the applicant. There's, it's not a, this is a code amendment, so this is just a staff initiated.
Okay, so.
It's a code amendment, but.
Did I hear that the request was not to limit it to medical centers, but to open it up to C three or whatever, more global?
That's what council has kind of been discussing, yeah.
That was the public comment.
Right, right, right. I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Yeah, which is something we could accommodate, or easy to accommodate in the ordinance if that's what you guys want to do.
I just feel like the intended purpose of proposition one twenty-two and the state legalizing it was for mental health purposes, right? And I think a lot of our mental health providers that can use this therapy to help people are not in these medical centers. And so it's just going to be so limiting to who can actually receive the benefit of this therapy.
I'm thinking along the same lines, too, that to me, having it based on where those medical providers are rather than the exact facility in which they're in makes, makes sense. They have to get licensed.
It's not as though we're just then like writing a blank check. It'd still be special review with other stipulations, but.
And James, I'm not trying to belabor how we're addressing this, and I think calling it out as a distinct use works just fine. But if we're couching this currently as a medical center and medical centers are a special use in the C three zone district, we're kind of in the same place already, right?
Well, no, not, not quite, because medical centers have a special definition to them that limits, you have to have a certain number of different types of medical uses and you have to have a certain square footage of medical use.
So it has to be a medical center plus this? Okay, then.
So if you took the use out?
Strip it out, make it its own distinct use, makes sense to me, okay.
And is C three broad enough? Is there anything we would be missing that would be?
Well, I mean, the, the other location where you might see those types of medical office uses are C two, the downtown zone district as well. So you could talk about whether you want those downtown, too.
If we're trying to give the availability to people to get mental health, and this is a mental health treatment, I don't think, once again, we should just limit it then to C three. I mean, I know there's therapists downtown. So, you know, and if we're, and if they still have to go through the special use thing and they're still going to have to show us the plan, then I would say.
And they have to be licensed by the state.
Yeah, they already, we're like triple, triple checking and double checking.
And a thousand feet from the schools, I mean, all the things. In which case, you know, probably, I don't know, are they a thousand feet from the school here in downtown? Probably not, so, but at least, yeah.
Generally, they're, they're right there.
Right there, yeah.
Jimbo's.
Oh, yeah, Jimbo's is there, so.
We're good people, isn't it?
Oh, there was a weed pot store on Goodland, too.
I think there were five hundred feet.
Maybe, maybe I'd suggest, if it's helpful to council, maybe we bring back, continue the second reading, bring this back with, I'm hearing some general direction on a, kind of putting this as a distinct use. Maybe we also just include a zoning map so it's clear where the, or at least for the packet, so it's clear where the uses could be permitted.
I think the map would be helpful, for sure, to see.
Yeah. And a basic one-on-one clarification, like, you can't just go in, right? You'd have to make your appointment with your doctor and do your pre-op appointment and stuff like that, right? Versus like, if it's a thousand feet from the school, like, right on the line, kids theoretically can like walk into Jimbo's. They can't technically buy anything in a way that they can't do that here, correct?
I do think that because Brooke's a licensed provider by the state, she can probably answer that question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
If that's okay.
I'm coming, come on up. If you don't mind, I mean, if you want to get this done.
Just seems like there's, seems to be more rigor here.
Yeah, absolutely. Brooke and I talked before the meeting, and yeah, I think she'll be a good resource.
So having gone through this process, I can tell you, the state has an extremely rigorous process. But I do want to say, it's not just physicians, right? So psychologists, social workers, there are psychiatrists as well throughout the state who have been obtaining licenses for, both for themselves to provide the treatment as well as the healing center. And I'm really speaking up for everyone else because this, this is not for me. This is for what I believe is a general problem in our area. It's hard enough to get a thousand feet away from a school in a rural area. But then you take, you know, a group of people who have gone through a year's training program for specifically psilocybin facilitation. We also have to do forty hours of practicum where I just returned from Oregon doing, doing that, giving and receiving for eight days. And then in addition to that, forty additional hours of ethical training in the setting of psilocybin. And one of the reasons for that is that. that is that in the underground community, in mushroom, in the world of mushrooms, there are a lot of sexual assaults. So you take a population that is already traumatized, perhaps seeking help for their PTSD, and then they are assaulted again. And so what the state has done is created an incredibly rigorous process that many of us have been working on for the past four years, that we believe is a little too rigorous. And so the last thing we really want is for rural communities to be further restricting that access. To answer your question, Hannah, no, you have to be over the age of 21. A typical process would include usually a referral from your psychiatrist or your therapist, then a medical consultation with me in my practice, where I would go through medical history, medicines you've taken, medicines you've tried before, making sure you have a therapist in place, addressing those issues, allergies, hypertension, all the things that would preclude you from using those medicines. If you then pass that medical screening, and again, this is very different from the underground, if you pass that medical screening, then we, you would move on to working with a licensed facilitator, who, again, has gone through that entire process through the state, and have at least two or three preparation sessions, sometimes remotely, sometimes in person, before your actual journey. And on your journey day, that would be about six hours. You would have headphones on, and you'd have an eye mask on, and you'd have two facilitators, again, to prevent sexual assault. So these are all requirements by the state, or it has to be videotaped. In our center, we don't plan to hold any psilocybin in-house, but there certainly will be healing centers that might want to do that and are allowed to do that by the state law. And then even after that journey, they're escorted to their hotel by two people, or they have a safe ride home that's planned and a safety plan beforehand. And then that's followed by several months of integration, where they really try to process what that journey meant for them, how they can make it make sense in their story, how it might change their story. And it's a super powerful experience if you haven't had a chance to be a part of this sort of higher regulated model. It's very different from going to a club and eating some mushrooms. So yes, I think the state has done an excellent job on the safety side. David, as you said, they are very rigorous with the safety piece of this, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your comments and everything, and helping us is kind of a good example of that cross-functional, you know? If we can do it, why not do it right? So, yeah, do you have, do you guys have enough direction if we were to continue and...
Yeah, maybe I'll just, based on everyone's comments, I'll just tee up a motion if somebody would like to move it, which would be to, that the council continue the second reading on ordinance number eight, the second reading and public hearing on ordinance number eight series of 2025 to June 20, to June 24th, with staff to pursue amendments to have a healing center as a distinct use in the use table and as a special use in the C3 and C2 zone districts.
That sounds like what we, what we centered on, so.
Somebody would like to...
Someone wants to so move that.
So moved.